I want to note that nothing has changed since this resolution is passed. Trans athletes have the same rights they did prior to this resolution being adopted. This resolution doesn't take away or grant any special rights to any group of people at all. This resolution has, in my opinion, nothing to do with any executive order, any federal law, any state law, or any JV girl basketball game. The Board has the legal authority to provide input and direction of the district, including WIA policy amendments, and grants each school district's Board of Directors the authority to control, supervise, and regulate the conduct of inner-school athletic activities and other inner-school extracurricular activities as part of an athletic, cultural, social, or recreational nature for students of the district. The Board as a whole represents the community, and the community, and the state, and the nation support this resolution at almost 80% rate.
All right, the work session is reconvened at 6:37 PM. So this is how it's going to work tonight. This is a meeting that you get to observe. It's a public meeting that you get to observe. If at any time we cannot continue with the meeting, then we will recess and go to a separate room to finish the meeting online. So if this is recess due to disruption, we will stop the YouTube stream and continue via Google Meets. The link is posted on our website and on the front door. So you will get one warning if you are interrupting the meeting, and after that, if we cannot continue, then we will go online. We will begin with Board member comments.
As the Tumwater School District Board of Directors, we agreed and committed to effective governance by establishing a unity of purpose, roles, norms, and protocols for formal structures, specifically Robert's Rules of Order, that enable our governance team to perform our responsibilities in a way that best benefits all children. At the heart, our protocols embody the principles of showing respect, committing to effective deliberation, and open communication, listening openly while allowing everyone to express their point of view, honesty, and the spirit of no surprises. This culture enables trust, which ensures fair representation of ideas. At the February 27th Board meeting, our agreed-upon protocols were not followed, specifically Robert's Rules of Order procedure for introducing the action item, Resolution 092425, WIAA Amendments. The result was a biased misrepresentation of the intent of the action item, thereby creating a situation where I felt the commitment to effective deliberation was lost and did not trust that I could express my point of view with the expectation that I would be listened to in an open, fair, and impartial manner. Tonight serves as a good faith effort on the part of the Board to correct the serious missteps
I'm sorry, interject. That's the one warning.
...and consequences resulting from the broken protocols by providing this opportunity to speak in a public and safe environment. Let me begin by saying, this issue is impossible. It is completely and utterly impossible, a stalemate, a game of tic-tac-toe in which there's no winner. There is no way to take a perspective on the issue of gender equity in sports without appearing to take one side at the expense of another. The most unfortunate thing is, this situation by its nature pits one historically marginalized group against another. Transgender people have been historically marginalized, and excluded, and discriminated against, and ridiculed, and abused, and harmed, and treated as less than human within the law, simply by virtue of being transgender. Women have been historically marginalized, and excluded, and discriminated against, and ridiculed, and abused, and harmed, specifically on December 15th, 2011, by being assaulted by a man at knife point on the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail, and treated as less than human within the law, simply by virtue of being a woman. This is the whole reason why laws like Title IX were put into place in the first place, to ensure the fair and equal treatment of women as compared to men. I understand the perspective of where people are coming from that have offered comments to the Board on both sides of this issue, both in support of transgender rights and in support of women's rights. Let me be clear about my perspective. It is not about erasing trans people, not even close. I've been on the Board for over five years, and anyone who's seen the work I've done to advance equity through my relentless focus on using data to illuminate and work towards closing opportunity gaps knows this to be true. There is no better example of this than my work as Board President last year to write and facilitate the passage of Resolution 092324, the Tumwater School District Board of Directors' Student Learning Goals. I encourage everyone to read the words in that resolution carefully. I've been an advocate for educational equity since the day I interviewed to be appointed to the Board, to include during some very tense times in the last few years in which that was not a popular opinion, but I did it anyway, even though it was uncomfortable at times because it was the right thing to do. It's not about that. So what is it about, then? It is about representing the voice of a female competitive athlete, coming from lived experience. This is a voice that has every right to be heard, along with everyone else, but has not been able to because of the impossibility of this issue and the grave concerns that people like me have about the perception that our voices might appear non-inclusive and bigoted towards the transgender community. So all I can do is emphatically state that I fully support the transgender community, and I fully support women, specifically competitive athletes, and share the reasons why. I started swimming competitively when I was eight years old. I fell in love with the sport rather quickly, not because of the pure joy of being in the water or the art of swimming, definitely not because of the social aspect of being on a team. Swimming is actually quite lonely, can't talk while you're doing it. In fact, I hated swim practice, primarily because it was hard, and it hurt, and then it only got more intense the further I went and the harder it got. Nope. What I fell in love with was the competition. I loved racing and competing more than anything, as well as the act of setting goals, working hard, and achieving them. I did it for 13 years, and every aspect of what the competitive spirit meant became ingrained in who I was became and how I live my life today. I was a decent swimmer, but I was by no means an elite athlete, and one that you would see on top of the podium often. But I loved swimming and competing so much that I wanted to do it in college. When I visited my college on a recruiting trip, I walked through the halls next to the pool, and there was a whole wall filled with these. I took one look and said, "That, that is what I want to accomplish. If I do nothing else in my four years, I want to earn that achievement, if only just once." This is an All-America award. All-American honors is a top-eight finish at the NCAA National Championships. Honorable mentions, top 16. I have eight of these, four All-American, and four honorable mention, but this one, for the 100-yard breaststroke, is the one that means more to me than any other ribbon, medal, record, or trophy I ever got in my 13 years of swimming. To swim at the national championships, you first have to qualify. In order to qualify, you have to swim a certain time standard or cut. Every event has a cut. For context, there is men's swimming and there is women's swimming. The cuts are different for men and women, and in every single event, the men's cut is faster than the women's cut. This is not just for collegiate swimming. Growing up in age group in high school, and every state and zone level championship was the same. Different divisions for boys and girls, men and women, and the boys and the men's cuts were always faster, even at the age of 10. As I said, I was a best and average swimmer, so this was a stretch goal for me. It took until my junior year to qualify for nationals, and it took until my senior year and my very last 100 breaststroke I'd ever swim in competition to make finals and finish top eight. You know what place I got? I got eighth, the very bottom of the podium, and I had never been happier in my life. This achievement represents so much more to me than I have time tonight to try and put into words, except that it's a culminating symbol of who I am and represents what I'm deeply passionate about. Noting the date 2000 here, fast forward 25 years in the evolving national conversation about gender equity in sports. When we hear about and read about the stories that make the national news, we often hear about the girl who took second place, or the girl whose record was broken by a transgender athlete. We don't hear about the girl who took third place, who maybe knew that taking first was not realistic and their primary goal was winning the silver, or the girl who took fourth place, who maybe only ever had a goal of finishing in the top three. We certainly don't hear about the girl who took ninth place at the national championships, whose one and only dream may now to come true, and thinking about how she's going to come to terms with that and move forward positively in life, given everything she came to know and understand about the spirit of fair competition through her lived experience as a female competitive athlete. I see myself in this issue, and most importantly, I see girls who are currently living it and the complexity of what they're trying to work through. I started out by saying this is an impossible situation. These girls are faced with the same challenges that we all are, and that they can't possibly stand up for themselves and share their voice and what they think is right without being accused of bigotry. Those who've tried to speak up are attacked and ridiculed and end up so frustrated that it causes mental health issues. You want to know why the voice for girls is quiet?
Hey.
And why so few people speak publicly about it? It's fear. They're afraid. Since this vote, I've received plenty of email from people upset, and plenty of email from parents and girls thanking me for supporting an opinion that they couldn't do it themselves and for having the courage to represent that voice. And while I appreciate this more than anything, it also makes me incredibly sad that the words courage and bravery have to be associated to speaking up for women and girls. But ultimately, that is what we are here to do, be a voice for people who, for a variety of reasons, can't do it for themselves, and ensure we create an environment that allows for all voices to be heard and respected. These are kids, and they shouldn't have to bear the responsibility and stress of making that decision. If I can help make a difference for just one girl and add to the sense of hopefulness that we as women are not moving backwards in our rights to fair and equitable competition, then that's all I need to feel good about it. I conclude with a reminder of what those of us who have thoughtfully and purposefully engaged in equity conversations have learned to think about, and that is the concept of both and. The basis of both and is that multiple things can be true at the same time, and that everybody has a right to their experience and feelings regardless of what somebody else is experiencing. As leaders, we have a responsibility to listen to the voices of the people we serve and use our lived experience to make the best decisions possible. We also have a responsibility to engage in the difficult conversations in a way that adheres to the guidelines that we've set for ourselves, which are there to ensure that all voices can be heard in a fair and respectful way. If ever there was a time for us to embrace this complex way of thinking, it is now, within this impossible paradox of human rights for all. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to take this moment to address the School Board's resolution from a couple weeks ago and the misinformation that followed. I want to clarify the resolution. We passed the Resolution Directing Guidance on two amendments at the WIA. I think we all know what the amendments are. But what we didn't do, and what a lot of headlines and misinformation that was out there is, we didn't ban anyone. We didn't change any policy. We didn't change any rules. We didn't do any of that. We don't even technically have a vote in the WIA Amendment process. We do not have a General Assembly member from our school district. What we do have is administration or athletic directors that can vote within leagues within District Four, and then those leagues accumulate their votes and decide how to spread them out through the General Assembly that's in their district. We have nine leagues in our district. I think there's a couple things to keep in mind here. Like Darby said, the previous meeting, the presenter of the resolution failed to clearly explain what the Board was actually doing. For multiple reasons, the resolution was not properly outlined, leading to unnecessary confusion and misrepresentation. First, the presenter did a poor job of clearly explaining the resolution and leaving the public and the media uncertain about what was being proposed. Secondly, the presentation itself was biased, as the presenter inserted her own commentary into the issue before a motion could even be made, meaning the Board was not allowed to engage in discussion before the personal opinion was introduced.
Now, we are on action item, Washington Interscholastic Activities Association Policy Amendments. Before we get to that, I'd like to make some comments. So there's not a staff presentation. I'm going to open up the discussion. I'd like to open this discussion by saying I have significant concerns about this resolution. The resolution, if passed, would direct staff to support and approve WIAA Policy Amendments VII and VIII, both of which would limit participation in girls' sports to students whose biological sex is female and not honoring a person's gender identity if it differs from their biological sex. As mentioned before, I have a number of concerns about this resolution. First, gender identity is a protected class here in Washington. Protected classes include race and color, national origin, religion and creed, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, veteran or military status, disability, and use of a service animal. All of these classes are protected from discrimination. Any prohibition against a student playing in sports based upon gender or gender identity is against the law in Washington State. When we began serving on this Board, we all took an oath to uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Washington. To my knowledge, neither of those have changed. Voting for this would be against the oath I took to act in accordance with the law. Because this is a state law, there is a process to change laws, and this process is outside this body's jurisdiction. Until those laws change, it is our job to serve students in accordance to the laws. Executive orders must work in conjunction with the laws and do not supersede or negate the laws that are currently on the books. The amendments referenced in this resolution are in conflict with current law, and even if the amendments were adopted, WIAA cannot implement them. I question why we would direct staff to encourage WIAA to go against state law. Finally, most importantly, I am firmly opposed to this resolution because of the message it sends to our transgender students here in the Tumwater School District. Since 2016, I have advocated for students, staff, and families here in the Tumwater School District, and to have a space to be their authentic selves and to live the life that they were meant to live. Transgender students are a part of our district, and I'm concerned that this resolution communicates that we do not see these students as an equal part of our community. We owe it to all students to take time to sort this out and find a way so no students are harmed. We owe it to our students to figure out this way, to make sure everyone can be included, and model how we can find a solution together.
It is worth noting that the presenter was the only no vote on this resolution.
All those in favor of Resolution 092425, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Her lack of neutrality in presenting the resolution contributed to misunderstanding and controversy that followed. Instead of an adjective presentation of what was actually being proposed, it became skewed by her personal stance, further fueling misinformation and confusion. Yet despite these facts, some have chosen to continue to spread this misleading narrative. The media has irresponsibly reported false claims, with some headlines stating things like "Tumwater bans trans athletes," which is simply not true. I was contacted by multiple people within the district, asking if we play teams next week in sports with Tumwater forfeit. Will we sit out? The answer to that is resounding no. We have not banned or changed any policy. Our teams will play. If an individual doesn't want to play, that's up to them. I want to address the disruptions from last week as well. Following our resolution, our meeting was overtaken by protesters, many of whom I strongly believe are not even from the community. I want to be clear. I firmly believe in the First Amendment and the right of individuals to voice their disagreement, protest, and express their views. This is a fundamental part of a democracy, and I respect it completely. However, there is a difference between exercising free speech and crossing the line into disruption, intimidation, and threats. The protesters did not come to debate or discuss. They came to shout out, obstruct, and intimidate. They refused to let Board business continue. They entered the Board's space. They ignored multiple attempts to restore order. But this did not stop at a disruption. One Board member was spat on. Another was directly threatened. Board members were followed out of the building and to their vehicles. The situation escalated where police had to be called. I think for the first time in my entire life today, I had to file a police report on a activist that was threatening me, harassing me, and said they would not stop. So let me be clear. This is not activism. This action is the definition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. While disagreement is a normal part of governance, what happened at the meeting was completely unacceptable. Our Board members, elected representatives, or appointed in my case, of this community should be able to do their jobs without fearing for their safety. We cannot allow a small, loud, aggressive group to take over discussions through threats and intimidation. Every member of this community deserves the ability to be heard, including those who support this resolution but are hesitant to speak due to fear of retaliation. I want to jump over real quick to some of the investigations that are going on in our district as well. Our district has recently been in the national spotlight due to situations involving a student athlete and subsequent investigations by the Office of Civil Rights from the Department of Education concerning Title IX compliance. At this same time, the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction of Washington State is now opening some kind of a threat or investigation into us alleging discrimination simply for directing guidance on the WIA Amendment. Let's step back and look at the contradiction here. On one hand, the federal government is investigating Tumwater, suggesting that our district may not be protecting fairness and competitive opportunities for female athletes under Title IX. On the other hand, the state government is now investigating the opposite direction, arguing that simply directing guidance on these amendments may be discriminatory towards transgender athletes. So which is it? These two investigations are rooted in completely opposing viewpoints, and Tumwater has been put in the middle of a no-win situation. We are simultaneously being scrutinized for both not doing enough and doing too much. And yet, the truth is, we did neither. Our resolution does not alter any district policy. It was not a directive to support amendments that aim to create clarity, fairness, safety, and competition, nothing more, nothing less. And let me emphasize, Tumwater School District remains in full compliance with Washington State law, WIA policies, and our district policies. There has been no violation, no rules broken, and no policy disregarded. Yet despite this, certain activist groups and media outlets continue to mislead the public. The truth is simple. We did not ban anybody. We did not break any laws. We acted in full compliance. The core issue to me is fairness and safety in sports. This discussion is not about exclusion. It's not about discrimination. It's about fairness and safety in athletic competition. A massive recent New York Times poll found that nearly 80% of Americans believe biological males should not compete against biological females in sports. This included 94% of Republicans and 67% of Democrats nationwide. This is not a fringe belief. It's common sense. In today's America, where division seems to be at an all-time high, it's rare to find anything that 80% of this country agrees on, whether it's politics, education, public policy. An agreement at that level is almost unheard of. Yet on this issue, the fairness and safety of athletic competition, there is a clear and overwhelming
Do you want to finish?
I'm going to finish.
Okay. I'm just saying that was the last one.
Okay.
You are Okay. Ty, please continue.
All right. I'm going to jump back just a couple sentences here from where I got interrupted. The core issue for me, and what I believe this resolution regarded, was fairness and safety in sports. This discussion is not about exclusion. It's not about discrimination. It's about fairness and safety in athletic competition. A recent New York Times poll found that 80% of Americans believe that biological males should not compete against biological females in sports. That includes 94% of Republicans, 67% of Democrats. This is not a fringe belief. It is common sense. In today's America, division seems to be at an all-time high. It's rare to find anything that 80% of the country agrees on, whether it's politics, education, public policy. Agreement on that level is unheard of. Yet on this issue, fairness and safety in athletic competition for girls and women, there is a clear and overwhelming consensus across political and ideological lines. That alone should speak volumes. Referencing California Governor Gavin Newsom in his newest podcast this last week, obviously someone that could potentially be a presidential nominee for the Democratic Party in 2028, recently acknowledged that this issue, calling for participation in biological males in women's sports, deeply unfair. This is a significant shift coming from someone who has historically aligned with more liberal policies, when even those who have previously supported broad transgender inclusion are now recognizing the fairness and safety issue. It further provides that this is not a partisan debate. It's a reality that people across the political spectrum are starting to acknowledge. Fairness in sports exists for a reason. Girls and women deserve a level playing field, but they also deserve to compete in an environment that prioritizes their physical safety, ignoring biological differences in strength, speed, endurance is just not unfair. It increases the risk of injuries in female athletes. I want to take a second here just to recognize the silent majority in this community. Many community members have privately expressed support for us on this resolution. Parents, coaches, students have reached out to me in agreement, but many are afraid to speak out publicly due to the fear of backlash. Unfortunately, we live in a time where the loudest voices often drown out the majority opinion through intimidation and personal attacks. Let's be honest, most of the people that are here causing these disruptions are not even from Tumwater. They do not represent our students, our families, and our athletes in this district. Their goal is not to have an honest conversation, but intimidate, disrupt, and silence opposition. I am here to represent our actual community, the students, the parents, and the taxpayers of Tumwater, and I will not be intimidated. Moving forward, I remain committed to a fairness, safety, professionalism, and well-being of all of our students. We welcome respectful discussions, but we will not be swayed by disruptive tactics. This Tumwater community deserves leadership that stands firm on principle and truth, and that is what I intend to do. Thank you.
I'll go next.
No, Casey's going next.
Go ahead. That's fine, John. That's fine. Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate it. Go ahead, John.
Okay. All right. Thank you for allowing me to speak, everyone. Now we are engaged in a great conflict of opinions. The key is to hold the district together for the benefit and need of our students. I abstained on the resolution because I believe in transparency and opportunity for affected people to have a platform to express their opinions. I believe the resolution was rushed without allowing for those two things. Also, it is crucial for the district to get clear guidance from both federal and state governments before bringing such a resolution to a vote. Currently, the national and the state laws and viewpoints are in conflict. As School Board members, we took an oath to follow federal and state laws and district policies. By abstaining, I was following that oath and my belief that in people and their rights. It benefits no one to force a resolution to the floor when more discussion and transparency and guidance are the best course for us. Such a resolution should not be put into action at this time because the deep conflicts currently in laws. Thank you.
Thank you, fellow Board members. Darby gave a great background on the facts and the impact around this, and especially addressed how the district supports all students and how this Board has worked together to ensure that historically marginalized groups have been represented fairly in this district. Ty gave a good summary of the intentional misrepresentation of the resolution through the media, in details around how the process actually worked. Both Ty and Darby, you know, addressed how this current policy, WIA, is unfair and unsafe, and I support that as well, too. I want to note that nothing has changed since this resolution is passed. Trans athletes have the same rights they did prior to this resolution being adopted. This resolution doesn't take away or grant any special rights to any group of people at all. This resolution has, in my opinion, nothing to do with any executive order, any federal law, any state law, or any JV girl basketball game. The Board has the legal authority to provide input and direction of the district, including WIA policy amendments, and grants each school district's Board of Directors the authority to control, supervise, and regulate the conduct of inner-school athletic activities. to control, supervise, and regulate the conduct of inner-school athletic activities and other inner-school extracurricular activities as part of an athletic, cultural, social, or recreational nature for students of the district. The board as a whole represents the community, and the community, and the state, and the nation support this resolution at almost 80% rate. Ty mentioned that earlier. Again, that is a threshold that is hard to reach on any subject at all. I want to clarify, previously in the last meeting, it felt like other board members were representing the thoughts and actions of other board members, and I want to clarify that I've never been in between a rock and a hard place on this issue. This resolution is absolutely clear to me, is what it does. The current WIA policy is unfair. I'm really confused as to why no one spoke up when the WIA General Assembly reached a threshold to advance these amendments to policy adoption. That happened last year. We didn't hear anything about that. I'm also confused why no one spoke up when several athletic directors from districts in this area voted to support these policy amendments as early as last month. This is a pretty common resolution. It's been adopted by several school districts previous to us. TSD is not the first, and we will not be the last. I do want to address how this resolution was presented. The introduction and handling of resolution 092425 violated both protocol and policy, as well as likely Roberts rules. Resolutions must be presented neutrally by the chair to ensure fair debate with no indication of personal bias. Instead, the presentation was markedly one-sided, framing the resolution in a manner that preempted any open discussion of any meaning. This breached Tumwater Policy 1400, which mandates that board meetings provide an opportunity for fair and orderly consideration of district business. The pre-planned statement of the presenter exacerbated in an already tense environment. Rather than maintaining decorum as required by the role of the president of the board, the presenter made bias and non-neutral comments that incited the audience to become disruptive. Shouting, interruptions, and threats from attendees followed, directly attributable to the failure to de-escalate. Policy 1430 demands that the board president ensure orderly conduct. Instead, the actions fueled chaos, undermining the board's ability to proceed with its agenda. This not only violated policy, but it set a dangerous precedent for public participation in the future. Also, Policy 1400 states, "The board as a whole has the final decision in determining the appropriateness of all such rulings and can maintain order by removing those individuals who are disruptive." However, the board recognizes the distinction between uncivil discourse, which we will not tolerate, and comments about the board, district, and/or staff that are negative but yet still civil in nature, and will exercise its authority to maintain order in a content-neutral manner. The board, as a whole, did follow all comments from the public, or did allow all comments from the public that were civil in nature. The presenter of the resolution incited and encouraged uncivil discourse. During the meeting, the presenter provided unsolicited legal interpretations, despite lacking the authority or expertise to do so. Washington school boards rely on district council for legal guidance and, as outlined in WAZA model policy as well. By overstepping into legal commentary, the president misrepresented the board's position, potentially exposing the district to liability and violated their role as a neutral facilitator according to Roberts rules, and assigns the chair no such prerogative. This was a clear abuse of position and power. Perhaps most alarmingly, however, is the conduct directly contributed to an unsafe environment for staff and students in attendance. The Tumwater School District's commitment to safety, enshrined in district policy and reinforced by RCW, obligates the board to ensure a secure setting for all. The failure to manage the meeting, coupled with remarks that inflamed and incited the crowd, resulted in a hostile atmosphere, where staff reported feeling threatened and students were visibly distressed and shaken. This lapse not only endangered those present, but also eroded public confidence in the board's ability to safeguard our school community. The broader implications here is that these actions contravene the spirit of collaborative governance that defines Washington school boards. The Washington State's School Directors Association, WAZA, emphasizes that board presidents must model impartiality, respect, and procedural integrity. By presenting a resolution with bias, inciting disruption, offering unauthorized legal opinions, and failing to ensure a safe environment, the presenter undermined these principles. The Tumwater School Board's credibility by extension and the district's ability to serve its students suffered as a result. These are not mere missteps. They represent a fundamental failure of leadership that calls into question. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add?